Everybody, please silence your cell phones. So we have an addition for for the agenda today. The city attorney is requesting to add the following items to the agenda which came to the staff's attention after the preparation of posting the agenda. Seven, B, discussion possible action, a resolution of the Warrica City Council of the of the city of Warrica proclaiming a local emergency, ratifying the proclamation of the state of emergency by the governor Newsom on March fourth, two thousand and twenty, and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the of the city of Warrica in the period successive thirty days periods pursuant of the Assembly Bill three sixty one. Number ten, closed session, the city council recess to this closed session, discuss the following items at the conclusion of the closed session. Open session will recommend and reportable action, if any, will be announced. Public employment, A, public employment position affected by city manager, and B, public employment employee performance evaluation position affected interim city manager. And then we'll go into eleven, which is announcement of any items of the city council closed session required by the Brown Act. All right, what is the wishes of the council? We add these to the agenda, I need two thirds of a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we add these items to the agenda.
You have a motion, Joan? Do you roll call to its Paul back on there? No, no, Paul yet. Okay, Joan.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett. Wayne Keg, I. So those will be added on to the agenda. We will start off. Okay, public comments. This is a time for public comments regarding issues and matters, not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city council of Warrica. Public comments is period is not intended to question and answer period or conversations with the council council or staff council members. When recognized by the mayor may ask questions by the presenter, but no action may be taken at the city council during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a reporter, place it on a future agenda. If you're here, please speak from the podium, state your name. For the record, please address the council as a whole. If you're having documents, please provide seven copies. Please limit your remarks five minutes. All right, do we have any public comments at this time? Then nothing. What do we have on board up there?
Anyone online?
That's it, just looking. Bill, that's it. No, no, Mr. McCoy yet. Okay, all right. Move on to the council staff, I don't have any there, so we'll go on to consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered routine, non controversial and be enacted on by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the public wishes to comment on the item. A approval ratification of payments issued from September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one through September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one. B approval of minutes of special meeting held on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty one. C approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. D continuation of urgency ordinance number eight fifty five COVID nineteen. E continuation of urgency ordinance number eight sixty four fireworks. F, we've all full text readings of ordinance on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. We have a question, comments? And council?
I'll move, we accept the consent calendar as presented, consent agenda, I'm sorry, as presented. And Mr. Mayor, I, Joan Smith Freeman was second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Joan Smith Freeman? Roll call. Corey Middleton.
I.
Debbie Barrett.
I.
Wayne Keg, I, and still absent on Mr. McCoy. So, all right, we'll move on to number six. Old business discussion, possible action, public works. Reconsideration of the approval resolution two thousand and twenty one dash forty seven, authorizing the city to seek proposals for South Foothill Drive cleanup project and approving a supplemental appropriation for capital outlay of one hundred and twenty five thousand. This one, do you want to start off with you, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, you did pass a resolution authorizing addition to the budget and the staff to go out for requests for proposals for removal of dirt from the four hundred north, I'm sorry, south foothill site. At that same time, you asked that this be brought back under the form of reconsideration as if additional information is received that would show an alternative fix for the contaminated soil were available that would be less expensive. So we actually, the director of public works contacted Pace Engineering, had them do a estimate, I mean, it's the best they could do with the limited amount of time. Plus, as you know, during that time, the director of public works also contracted COVID and hasn't been around to work with them much. I have tried to make some effort with them, as has Cindy who's here, who maybe answered questions you may have about this. But basically what they've come up with in the comparative note is the removal of dirt is still somewhere between a hundred and thousand, hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. There's a water meter that needs to be relocated, whether you remove the dirt or whether you pave over. So that's two thousand five hundred dollars. Import clean soil, backfill and compaction, we still don't know. We haven't been able to obtain an estimate for that. Asphalt over the site is around a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. And that includes frontage improvements that the engineer would normally require of any other project. We may or may not have to do that in doing this project. As the city.
I'm sorry. Joan.
Oh, I just had one question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Joan Smith Freeman, city council member. So I've noticed that that we're looking at asphalt. Were we also talking about concrete and what would be the difference in cost between asphalt and concrete?
Yes, and that was transmitted by the director of public works to the pace engineer who didn't respond with that information. However, the concrete would be a little bit more expensive, we think. But again, a lot of the expense is coming with a portion of the lot, you still have to remove the dirt, whether you remove the rest of the dirt from the lot or not. And there's still questions about whether you're providing parking, questions about other things that may or may not happen because the site plan hasn't been finished to a level that you know everything that's going to be done on the site. So anyway, asphalt over the site in the guest to make of the engineers around a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred to remove the dirt is, you know, a hundred and twenty five thousand, and that doesn't include bringing in new dirt.
Which usually getting clean soil is probably not going to be a problem, but will have to be, it'll have to be spread out, compacted and all that stuff.
No cost.
It's still because, yeah, so my guess would probably be upwards of another fifteen grand probably. On top of that, by the time you bring it in and compact it and stuff, just just for my rough estimate, yeah, of those amount of soil and stuff, so.
And putting asphalt on the site, you're still going to have to put some other type of service on top of that to make it usable for its intended purpose. And I don't have an estimate for that.
Yeah, by putting asphalt, you know, those things we have to consider, some type of canopies. This is something we discussed last time, so there's cheap alternatives or inexpensive alternatives to that. The other thing that we are exploring and be real soon is, and I want to acknowledge a dignitary here, I'm sorry that I did not announce this. We have Nancy Oliver, county supervisor here, so thank you for coming. Anyways, we, this is going to be a future conversation that we're going to have, that there's possible county funding that we might be able to use, utilize with pallet shelters possibly. We've been checking into this, we're going to have some future conversations on that, which would be fine with an injunction to the pavement. So if we did the pavement, the pallet shelters would be great.
Would raise it up off. Well, I'm glad to hear you say that because I know that we've been talking with the county. We haven't gotten a definite amount of money of what we could do, but I know that there's possibility for partnership.
Yeah, there is. We're gonna have some, we're gonna have some conversation tomorrow, I have, we have our homeless meeting tomorrow through the over there at Human Services. And what's going to be one of the topics at the, at the end there, we're going to discuss that, see how we can move forward to that and figure out a date and a time for all of us to get together. I know that's probably, I'm sure you've been approached on talking about that. And so we'll get together, see when we can get together on that, on that. So with that in mind, that's I said, that would be a perfect, a perfect fit with the with the pavement. Yeah, doing something like that. And with the pavement, you know, I wasn't a big fan first, obviously, but it's moving forward and that's the way I look at it. We can move forward in a positive way. The other thing is with the pavement also, we can get, even if we don't do, can't do pallet shelters and utilize that, we can, we can do temporary shelters. Like I said, you can get those canopies, those Costco canopies and then and put those up for very inexpensive. In fact, you can get the the better ones that I actually was selling at one point in time out of my property for about a thousand dollars, you could get a regular carport.
Right, I've seen those.
And those are, and they're really, you know, heavy duty, a lot better than the Costco units. If that's what they're using up at the, at the urban campsite at the Medford as well, it's like little cheap Costco units. And their biggest obstacle on those that the up there at the urban campsite was keep them anchored down. Because wind would come up and take them sailing away. And maybe they lost a couple of them, yeah, luckily they're not very expensive, but they're, because they're canvas covered versus these other carports are actually metal and and for a thousand, and they bolted down, yeah, you could bolt them down, so it would definitely be more of a feasible thing in that aspect.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've also been invited to that meeting, and I have not been going because you and another council member's been going, but it's my understanding the other council members out of town. And with your approval, I'd be happy to come and take the place since I was one of the original members of that committee.
And that's mine, yeah.
I've got it on my calendar.
I have no problem. When did we decide that? Because we never, I never got back to me on.
It says proposed new time is one thirty to three, is that correct?
That's just tomorrow? Well, that's just our regular, our regular homeless meeting.
Right.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the one with the county supervisors. Is the other meeting that we're supposed to have.
So am I allowed to come to that?
If Paul's not around, I.
As long as there's not more than two.
Exactly.
Did you want to?
I have no problem with that.
Did you want to go? No. Well, if if nobody else was going to be there and we're allowed to have two, then I'd be happy to attend. I just didn't want to butt in it.
And I would be more than happy, happy to come tomorrow, yes.
Okay, well, you and I were the original members on that committee, so I'd be happy to attend.
We were from the get go.
From the very first one, three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Over four years ago. So, that's great. I think, I guess this next question is what, you know, what does the council want to do? Like, I want to hear everybody's opinion and and what, so I'll start off with, I'll start off with you, Joan, and then I'll work my way around the rest of council and see what.
Talking too much, don't you? Madam Mayor program, what do you think?
Actually, I, I, it looks like six of one, half dozen on the other to me. So what is going to make the facility more comfortable for the inhabitants?
Well, that's a good question.
It, you know, if we, we put some top of cover, I mean, the more our research is out, the, you know, I wasn't again, I was not necessarily for the pavement, you know, originally, because of the hot, but if we can put covers on it, then then it's, it's going to be fine. But what I've looked up at what they had up there, as long as we have some type of shelter, it'll be fine.
So, but my other concern was that if we went pavement of any kind, asphalt or if we encapsulated, that the trees would have to come down, is that correct?
So, but we only have, I just went out there this weekend, I go there every weekend up there, I do a walk around. We have only two trees on city property. The restaurant, the restaurants on Beacon of Hope's property. Yes. So if we did, if we did tree removal, we'd only have two trees that would have to remove.
I, I'm back to the original plan after finding out that the cost is going to be in the same neighborhood.
That's great, I, I, whatever, I just want to see something move forward. So Joan, are you going to call her, Corey?
I, I just had one question, Corey. Okay, my question was about the the grant. I know that there's possibility, so we wouldn't have to pay for it out of our general fund. There's possibility to get that funded by the EPA.
Right.
And so I'm just curious as to where we are with that. Oh, here comes Cindy. Did she apply?
I was going to wait until I was questioned.
Come on down.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I understand it, we could apply for a grant, they're competitive, we may or may not get it. And even if we got the grant, they, we wouldn't really get funded until October of next year. With a whole lot of approvals on the EPA's part, we could possibly move that back three months so that we could be reimbursed for costs incurred in July. And with even more heavy duty approvals and working through everything very carefully, possibly any work we did in April could be reimbursed through that grant if we, that's if we got it. So it would, it'd be about the timeline.
It would be till October of next year, so we're looking at that delay of basically a year.
If you want the work to be part of the grant that's being applied for, the grant monies would not be available until April. I'm not sure at this moment in time if we don't have to then apply in April for those monies if they're.
We, we have to apply soon.
Yeah.
We have to apply, and then even then, they're not necessarily awarded until October.
So there could be a period of time while the application is being considered before you could spend the money also.
In other words, if we did it too soon, we could not be reimbursed.
Right. Yes. Or we might not get it all and we're set back a whole other year with the impact of the homelessness growing three times the amount, because it's grown. It's, I got two new camps up above my house just this last week. Yeah. Anything else?
Um, no, I'm here for questions if anyone has any, but.
Anybody, any other questions for Cindy?
Well, I'm just concerned about, about, about the budget, and you know, this would come right out and and I don't think this is a budget.
No.
The soil removal's been budgeted, sorry. But we did do that supplemental appropriation of a hundred and twenty five thousand for removing the soil when that was going to be the project.
It has been amended to the budget by your previous action when you adopted the resolution to remove the dirt. Um, and then the last thing I was just going to do as part of the presentation, you have two options at this moment in time. You either move forward or the reconsideration, or your opportunity to reconsider your previous action goes away. Reconsideration only works on the next subsequent council meeting agenda.
Right.
Or you can let it go forward.
Yeah, that's our choices, yeah, we need to move forward of what we already decided or do the reconsideration. Yes, Mr. Middleton.
I think at this point we have, I mean, we have choices, but I think at this time, I think we just need to move forward. The original plan and keep, stop messing around. I mean, just tell me what else about the future and so that's all I have to say.
Well, I, you know, that's original plan would be dirt removal, okay. I just want to clarify that.
Same.
It's pretty much the same price other than, you know, we don't, other than we do not know how much, like I said, that bringing in dirt, clean dirt and compacting it down, my, I said, my rough estimate from what I've researched would be probably closer to another fifteen grand on top of that. So, so then that's another on top of the one, you know, well, one hundred, one twenty five would be another.
This is, they're thinking up to one twenty five, it's not for sure.
Right.
You have one twenty five to remove dirt.
Yeah. Still have.
Not to put it back or.
Put it back.
Yeah, but then again, it's contaminated.
Yeah, or if we do pavement, or if we do pavement, it's, they just. Hundred and twelve and it's done, we don't have to bring any other dirt in, so.
I, I mean. But I, I thought I read that some dirt has to be removed.
That's my thought. There is some, yeah, some, it does, just.
You mean on the, what section?
If we asphalt?
Yeah, just that portion in the front.
Front, very front section, yeah.
And that's where the cost for that is estimated in the hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
So that would be the final.
I thought it was additional.
No.
Well, the engineer's best guesstimate.
Right.
And he wanted to make sure I emphasize this, these are not, you know, plans where they've actually come up with a bid proposal or anything of that nature. This is his guesstimate.
There's quite a possibility too that the pavement could come at last too. Like, I just, I just literally had my parking lot paved, park it paved today and a chunk of it, and it was only six tracks.
How big is that?
It's a very small little area that I did in front for the parking lot, which we'd end up doing about three times that, four times that, what we need to encapsulate. So even so, I think, I think we, you know, if we did some research, we could get a pavement possibly done for less money. Awesome, that's a private spectrum too, everybody's got to remember, that's not, that's not the government, so.
So. This is.
So that changes a little bit then.
Well, my question.
I thought it wasn't included, the other part of the dirt.
But the question on that is, okay, this is October. So it's my understanding that asphalt has to be laid within a certain temperature. In other words, it can't be too cold, it can't be too hot, right? So it would have to be done fairly soon.
It's in the next month, yeah.
Time.
Yep, exactly.
Our next brand, they don't make it this year, yeah.
And it, and it can't be done in the rain, it's supposed to rain.
Yeah, no, yours is absolutely right. And then we'd have to go out for bids and everything else, so that's where the bid process slows it down. We'd delay another month and then we probably would be looking at that, yeah, so, yeah.
But don't, doesn't that dirt removal have to be sent out to bid too?
Um, I don't know how much of that, yeah, that has to be removed. Pull your microphone closer.
Can you hear me now?
So you, what was the?
Oh, I was asking about having to go out to bid, and I think Cindy's coming down for dirt removal as well as for asphalt. We would still have to go out to bid, right?
What we have to come up with the plan in writing and then go out to bid for it, yes.
Right.
And we have already put out the RFP as you requested for the dirt removal.
Oh, okay, so that's been done.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps, that saves some time.
Yeah, in fact, that's closing, it could close in October, what was it, fourteenth or something? So that would be, the bid process would be closed in October fourteenth, so the dirt removal, it does speed it up on that much aspect, so you, you guys are right on that. You know, so I I'm all for whatever gets done fastest at this stage, to be quite honest with you, but that's, that's my opinion. We're so far behind the guns right now, like I said, that the, the encampments are increasing by size pretty much daily. So we need to get something situated as soon as possible. But that's, you know, whatever the wishes of council, we need to move forward on whatever they want. So.
I already said move forward.
Okay, and I guess Joan.
With the original dirt removal?
There's no, it doesn't have to be a motion.
In which case you do not.
Just go forward with what we decided.
That's already, we've already voted on it, so it's already there.
Okay.
In which case you do not need a new motion.
Correct.
You just need to go to your next item.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Is everybody good with that? I understand that, but that's about it.
Yeah.
Forward it. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
And we are to seven, seven A, and discussion possible action, the planning. Adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Plan West Partners Incorporated for the preparation of two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and thirty, general plan housing element update. And this is Liz, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Keg, council members.
We love seeing you. I know, we like to see you every time. I know, that's impossible.
The resolution before you tonight is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Plan West Partners, Inc. For the preparation of the city's sixth cycle general plan housing element update. The city attorney has reviewed the proposal and prepared and approved the professional services agreement, which was mailed to each of you on the twenty eighth of September. This is one of the activities that was funded by the SB two planning grant in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand back in April of two thousand and twenty. The project was delayed while we waited for our state Rena numbers. Rena is a regional housing needs allocation. The proposal received is well within the grant funds allotted, which is sixty two thousand. The proposal is fifty nine, nine, forty two. Did each of you have a chance to read it over? It's basically a formality in changing the contract. E Corp was going to do it, changed their minds, and now we need to renegotiate a contract. We do have the Vanessa with Plan West on the phone. She says her internet is kind of sketchy. If you guys have any questions, she'll try to answer.
Okay. We have a question. Questions for the council.
And then Vanessa is from Plan West?
Plan West.
Hi, Vanessa.
Hi, everyone. I'm not going to turn my video on because it is, my internet is unstable, but it is good to be here tonight. Thanks for, thanks for listening.
Great, thank you, thank you for coming, for being present, I should say, on the phone. All right, what do we have for questions, comments, concerns? I think it's, why I read, it's all there, so I know the questions we have.
I only have one question.
Yes.
And that's it, Liz. So Liz, you've been working with these people and you are satisfied with.
Definitely, as a matter of fact, our city attorney is even familiar with the firm because they're over in his old neck of the woods, so. Yeah, we've got a double dose of confidence. Our planners, E Corp, also reviews and said that it met all of the requirements in our RFP. We've got a couple of little things we're going to negotiate out to just find many terms on how we meet, but they are very well prepared to do it.
And I can give you a little background on our firm if you, if that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So we are located over in Arcata in Humboldt County, and we are working on a number of SB two funded projects and have done, prepared some six cycle housing elements in Humboldt, Del Norte and Mendocino counties. So we have quite a bit of experience doing housing element updates and related zoning code updates and SB two funded projects. So we're really looking forward to working with the city of Warrica and over in your neck of the woods and meeting with the community and working with your staff to update your housing element.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, council, we have any questions?
I think this has been approved, Mr. Mayor. This is, this has gone through the process and it's been approved by the state, right, for.
Oh, our grant was approved back in April. This is just one of, there are four activities under this grant. And like I say, we waited to do this, we needed our Rena numbers. And the grant itself, all the funds have to be expended by June, two thousand and twenty two. The housing element itself must be adopted by November, two thousand and twenty two. So that means it's got to, after they prepare the document, they'll send it to HCD. We've got to take it to our planning commission and then to the city council. So there's process, but the, the biggest obstacle is meeting this grant date to expand everything complete by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty two. But they're, they're on board, say they can do it.
Good.
Sounds good. Good news, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
Unless there's no other questions.
Then I think the recommended motion to approve.
Yes, please.
Find it.
Motion to adopt the resolution, it's on the second.
Okay, adopt, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Plan West Partners, Inc. For the preparation of the two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and thirty general. of the twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty general plan housing element update.
Council Middleton, I will second.
Motion in a second. Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Bear.
Hi.
Boys not here, so he's, and I say I on my part too, so.
Thank you, council. And Vanessa, thank you for phoning in.
Yes, thank you all. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
I think the important part of that presentation you should recall is that Liz said she would be working on this through twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Thank you, Liz.
Wait, wait a second, didn't this whole?
Noted, noted.
Twenty thirty though?
No, actually, since twenty thirty, so Liz, we've got you forever.
Yep, you're stuck here forever, Liz.
So you are, photo friend. That's great, good job, Liz. And Vanessa.
All righty, then we will move on to. Yeah, was it seven? Yeah, two seconds.
Seven B.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Oh.
Actually should have been. Right, something's all right though. We have the, we like to change some of the.
Seven C.
So that one is supposed to be seven C, yeah.
Oh.
Seven C is discussion possible action, but.
Yeah, so that's.
So we're on seven B, aren't we?
We're on seven B, but this one we had for addition to the agenda, says seven B, it was supposed to be seven C.
Our says seven C.
Mine says seven C.
Oh, mine says seven B for some reason.
Okay.
The one, seven C, we'll go to seven B then. That's interesting.
Mine says the same thing as yours.
Huh?
Mine says the same thing as yours.
Seven B. So pardon me, something.
That was just a test and you all passed.
I caught it, so I guess that's good. Uh, we go to seven B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract to Allen Gill Construction Incorporated for the Main Street Water System Improvement Project in the amount of four million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand and ninety-five dollars for the, for the base bid and the execute related documents. Cindy, again, thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, and Elizabeth Council. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if I was seven B or seven C.
I'm not sure either.
Just go with it.
There it is.
Um. As you know, we went out to bid on the date of the last city council meeting, which was the twenty-first, which was why we didn't bring this to you that night. We need time to get everything together. But, um, the bids were opened and Allen Gill Construction of Calle Cedro came in under the top estimate for the bid. And we have gone through everything. The city attorney has seen all the bid documents and all the backup and you're bringing it for you to, um, award. And if you have any questions?
Okay, yeah, we have any questions from the council? We've already discussed this. This is, this is the second time we're looking at this, but city attorney, as you said, has already addressed it, looked at all that, so I think we're good to go there. So unless there's some other questions from the council.
No question, but it always surprises me that someone so far away can be less expensive than someone closer.
Calle Cedro is not that far away. Calle Cedro is not that far away.
It is me.
Okay.
It is the way I drive.
It's a little bit bigger than ready and ready with the other bed.
My mom, does Calle Cedro always? Okay.
It would be nice, I agree, it would be nice to have someone within.
It was. So we did get one last one.
We, we put it out, so that's all we can do.
That's all we can do. Advantage paving got, so that's a local.
All righty, so what's all we wish is the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract to Allen Gill Construction Incorporated for the Main Street Water Systems Improvement Project in the amount of four million blah blah for the basement and to execute related documents October fifth, twenty.
It's three fifty-six, ninety-five. I don't think we're supposed to say blah blah.
Four million, three fifty cents.
Three hundred and fifty-six thousand and eighty-five dollars.
Yes.
I don't think we're supposed to say.
No, probably not.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
I don't think the minutes are verbatim.
Yeah.
All right, we have motion in a second. Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Bear.
Blah, 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 right?
My, one K guy, so motion is carried.
So that's what we do when we're tired now, just read through blah, blah, blah.
If it's either bad or yada, yada.
How lazy are we getting up here?
Mr. Mayor, just as a comment, I've been doing city manager business for forty years, and I have signed away more money in the last two months than I did for the previous forty years.
Geez, that doesn't make us sound good.
So we can award, we can award or what?
The good news is all the grants you're getting.
Yeah. Okay. Doesn't make us feel good though.
Yeah.
All right, now we're on to seven C.
Seven C.
That was, I got the right one on that one. Uh, a resolution of the Wayrica City Council, the city of Wayrica, proclaiming a local emergency ratifying the proclamation of the state emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty, and authorize remote teleconference meeting of the legislative bodies of the city of Wayrica for the period of successive thirty day periods pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Don's not on the phone.
No, but he said if we needed him, that we should call him.
Yeah, I talked to him earlier, he said he was gonna be on, so.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, if I may summarize, basically you've been conducting Zoom meetings, and that was allowed by an exception to the Brown Act created by the governor. This extends that. That is the simplistic explanation. So you need to approve the resolution, and then we will be bringing it back to you every council meeting, just say it is on this meeting to extend the resolution.
Extend the resolution, and just like we're doing all the other ones.
Thirty days.
Until the law expires, at which point either the governor will extend it again, or we won't be doing Zoom, Zoom meetings.
I think it's gonna be extended for indefinitely, I think. I think it's gonna be a thing in the future myself, that it's gonna be where everybody's gonna be doing it, period. You know, just to have that option at least. I think it's changed this, COVID has changed the way we do a lot of things, unfortunately.
I don't think it'll ever change back, but. If no one has any other comments, I'll make the motion. To pass the resolutions, uh, Wayrica City Council, the city of Wayrica, proclaiming a local emergency ratifying a proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty, and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative body of the city of Wayrica for a period successive thirty day periods pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one.
Motion.
Second. Council Middleton, I'll second.
All right. Freeman.
Hi.
Corey Milton.
Hi.
Debbie Bear.
Hi.
Paul McBoy's absent still, yes, and I, Dwayne K, guy, so it's carried on. Till the next city council meeting.
Well, thirty days.
Thirty days.
Oh, thirty days, that's true. Next month, we got another.
November, yes.
Every month we'll have to do this, right?
It's like the airworks.
So now we're on to number eight, which is city manager staff reports.
I have no reports.
No reports?
Well, no reports at this time.
Okay. All right, any of the staff?
We have the chief here.
He's like, oh.
Shaking his head.
Don't tell me you haven't done anything for two weeks.
Did you not get his report?
We got Randy's report.
Poor guy finally had a weekend off to, well, didn't really relax, but he, he did relax.
Yeah, his report is his brother got married.
Oh.
Son.
Your son?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Congratulations.
Good. So, okay. Then if there's no other staff reports, then we move on to councilman's report. Joan, go first. Yeah, put you on the spot real quick, that way you don't have time.
Um, I think that since the last meeting, I've been to the, um, I've been to the League of California Cities Meeting. And in fact, I was forwarding information from that meeting on to city manager and to our mayor and other people.
See you guys, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good night. Um, and that, uh, information that we could use regarding like sale of property and other things that I went to, and uh, it was really informative. It was good, it was well attended. There were about two thousand people from over California there. Two thousand.
Wonderful.
Originally, they thought there would be eighteen hundred, and then additional people signed up on the spot, which put it over nineteen hundred, and then all the vendors that were there, it made, put it over two thousand people. They had very strict restrictions. When you came in, you had to have your, um, either your notice of, uh, that, uh, what do you call it, certificate of having had your vaccines, which they checked, and they went to the state side and checked, and they put a green check over yours, and then they passed you on to the next person. And if you didn't have the vaccine, you had to have a, uh, recent negative test. And everyone in the building had to wear a mask, so we wore masks for days. My ears are still sore. So, um, anyway, but it was really a good meeting. I thought they had really good, um, keynote speakers as well as really good breakout sessions. Uh, the rural breakout session was really interesting. It was about water.
Yeah.
Uh, and I can get you all the information from that. Uh, it was a big stack of information, and I scurried around and went to all the meetings that I could, but there were so many breakout sessions in a row, I couldn't go to all of them. So next year, I'm going to challenge you all to go down with me.
I think you're right on that aspect. We need to split up and be able to hit some more of these, because there's so much.
Right.
It's.
If the budget allows.
Yeah.
If the budget allows. It was really good information. I'm really glad that I, that I went, and I do have information to give to all of you from the meetings that I attended. I just have to, uh, get it all printed out at City Hall, hopefully. I don't have enough.
Yeah.
But, uh, it was good, and thank you all, um, for sending me. I also voted, I was the delegate. Uh, and I voted, uh, it was interesting because there were a couple of challenges to the votes, which was interesting to hear both sides of, of an issue.
What was it?
The mayor of Modesto, he wanted to have quiet zones for trains coming through. Uh, and he wanted to add that on to a motion, and it got voted in. I was kind of surprised because I thought it was reasonable.
So what was you, what were you voting on? I'm sorry.
Oh, we were voting on amendments to the bylaws, which the bylaws allowed, uh, to have one, at least one representative from breakout caucuses, which is the Women's Caucus, the LBGQ Caucus from the, um, from the Asian Pacific Islanders, uh, caucus, the Black Caucus, and anyway, each caucus now didn't before it gets to have one representative on the board. And as you know, I represent our fifty-eight northern cities on the board, so I did go to the board meeting, and that was accepted, the board meeting, and then accepted by the whole general, um, meeting. And so that's one representative from each city in the entire state, which is like five hundred and twenty-seven cities, is that right?
When I retired, there were four hundred and fifty-eight.
There's more now, there's more now, but it's close to, close to five hundred.
It's only thirteen years ago.
So. So it was interesting to see the representation there and to, and to meet people. Um, there are a lot of rural cities in our state, and it, it's interesting because we always, I think, think of ourselves as being the underdogs, but actually, if you count it up, there are more rural cities than there are, um, you know, larger cities. So, um, I think we have a good backing. So if we need to take something in to have voted on, you know, I'd be happy to do that at some point. I know that broadband was a really, really big issue, and there's funding that's coming down that's available for that. In fact, we have our supervisor in the audience, Supervisor Nancy O'Gran, and I know that CSAT uh, and RCRC are also working on broadband issues, and there's some, there's some possibility for funding coming down, and I think that Randy also went to a meeting with all of the city managers in the county.
Facilitated by the EDC.
Facilitated by the EDC, and the cities have agreed to chip in some money. I think there's a twenty-five thousand dollar match from the state, and the state money is like in the millions. Right? State and federal funding. So, uh, there's a lot of support for that.
Yeah.
We're very fortunate in the city of Wayrica that we do have a good bandwidth, but not all the cities do. For instance, city of Montague has virtually none, city of Attna, same thing, and we're halfway in the middle of that. So we've been speaking with Nancy O'Gran and the county as well as with our staff to talk about how can we help, how can we help mitigate that? So that's something that may be coming to you in the future. Uh, but that was, there was a great deal of conversation about that in breakout session.
Is that because of, sorry, I just want to question, is that because I've been reading about that is, um, during kids when they're not in school, a lot of the lower income families not having the broadband for homework, and they've gotten behind, and so they're really pushing for the broadband because kids being out of school, is that, is that a part of it?
The schools, uh, as well as people working from home. There is more demand for broadband right now.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, sadly, you know, not every household in even Wayrica has broadband now. So this new legislation that's going through right now, SB three, three sixty, three sixty-one, three sixty-one, three seventy-one. Anyway, uh, there is funding available for that, which would help our citizens. It would be good for us. So I think that it would be who less to work to partner with the county as well as other cities. And so that's something that I've been working on as well.
For sure.
Yeah.
It's important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all for now.
You just got some, go someplace different.
Well, it was interesting, uh, to go to Sacramento, and I just wanted to know that I saved the money because the hotels were so expensive in Sacramento that I did with, uh, with the help of other people that have done Airbnb. I actually got an Airbnb instead of three hundred dollars a night. It was half that. It was less than half, that was one twenty-five, including the parking, and the hotels were initial thirty or more a night for parking. So, yeah, it, it cost me like a third of what it would have cost to stay in a hotel, so I saved the citymen. Yes, and I mean, it's always nice to stay in a hotel, you know, close to where it is, and it wasn't at Sacramento Convention Center, and so kind of the key hotel was either the Sheraton or the Hyatt, but they were so expensive. I just, I, I know myself that I, I wouldn't pay that much for hotels for my own budget, so I didn't think that the city should either, and so it was a very nice location. It was, it was only six blocks away. So it was walking distance, uh, as well as if I couldn't walk, then I could walk and park, and it was still cheaper um, than staying in an expensive hotel. So I, I did talk to Randy about that, and I talked to Rheta, and they approved that it was okay to stay in an Airbnb.
Especially if it's cheaper.
Yeah, a lot, a lot cheaper. I was surprised.
I don't think any of us will know about that.
Yeah. Anyway, anyway, I tried to save money.
Uh, I don't think I have anything, except for one, one thing I'll try to promote for Jenny at the Grandpa Group and, you know, the company I'm at is, I know we have one more meeting, but she is, um, organizing and doing the trick or treat downtown again, which is always popular. So, um, hopefully the downtown merchants, uh, sign up and get ahold of Jenny at the Grandpa Group to sign up, and, um, it's always a good event, and the kids and parents like it. So I think it's, I don't, I think it's Friday before Halloween, because I think only on Saturday or Sunday, so it's gonna be that.
Yeah, Halloween's on Saturday.
So I think it's gonna be Friday.
I think it's Saturday.
So, so hopefully, if there's business out there, everybody can get the word out for the downtown merchants to sign up. And actually, she goes further than just downtown now. She'd even come down Broadway on the main, I think. Even they can participate, so it goes further.
They came by my store last year.
Yeah.
I ran out of candy, and I had over eighty dollars worth of candy.
So, yeah.
Yeah, those, those kids line up.
Yeah, it's busy. Um, trying to think anything else. Sure there is, but I can't think of anything, so I think I'm done. Pass it to somebody else.
Debbie Bear.
I'm good. I've just been working, so.
Yeah, I think it's been kind of a general consensus. Running, running crazy. Yeah. Um, you know, just same thing, a lot, a lot to add. We just, uh, have a homeless meeting tomorrow, which would be good. For that, I have a couple more weeks on my point in time count for the seven counties in the lower state, which will be fine tuning the the forms on how we're gonna do that, and it looks like this year at least we'll be able to, hopefully, it looks like we'll be able to actually do an unsheltered count, like I was talking about before, so that's more of the reason why we need someplace for our individuals, our local individuals, homeless individuals, to be able to help them in a certain spot towards easier to count those and address those issues. Here that, I'm trying to think, we have some events coming up, but.
I haven't heard a thing on the parade. Haven't seen any advertising or anything.
No, I gotta get ahold of her and find out.
Yeah, best of.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a meeting.
Teasers out there.
Yeah. We had that initial meeting, I think I told you about that initial meeting, and gave her a whole list of ideas, but hopefully she'll move forward soon.
I know she was in town today working on something, but I didn't see. I know she was in town today working on something, but I didn't see her.
Um, yeah. In conjunction to that, did we, I know we approved it. Did we ever get them to, um, take the money, basically?
They have to write it up. I thought, they have to write up exactly what they're going to do and then we sign it, right? And then we get money.
Yeah, we haven't, you haven't heard, have you, Mr. Johnson?
If I may interject, uh, council member McCoy requested a breakdown of how they plan on spending the money as well. And, uh, we did get that. It was pretty vague, but we did get that, if I remember correctly. And he also requested the same from, um, the museum.
Yeah, museum, I'm sorry. Okay, well, I'll get ahold of Crystal. See what the rats looking forward on that. All righty. And if there's anything else anybody wants to add, then I'm calling the meeting and we'll go to closed session then. Thank you, everybody.